All straight. Speedy, Timberville Town Council Board, June 10th, 2021. It's a little bit different actually than having real people here, is that on video, so congratulations that we made it through this year. Um, let's begin with the pledge, AC. Do you have any questions? Don't get in the way. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Everyone who received their packets this week, email or letters. Did you have the minutes from the May 13 meeting? Has everyone had a chance to review them? And if you have any comments or changes, now is the time to bring them up.
It's not a good role in making the point you mentioned.
Okay, thank you Carl, do I have a second? Okay, and do you still want to be roll call votes?
Yes.
Okay, we'll start on the right one, Carl.
Yes.
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 Yes, I'll just do point and you'll know who they are. Okay. Um, you received a copy of the treasures report, the balances and all the funds and the loan amounts. And also with that, you're receiving a copy of the expenditures for the park, from one of the park projects, oh, the park project, excuse me. And what they spent so far on the uh sports complex down there. And as you saw, Chris's note is coming to an end soon. Going to be finished by the next month, month and a half. So just a word note, the paving contractor wants to put the posts up and the basketballs, excuse me. And the paving contractor did the lines on there, we'll get the gas. So any questions on any of those reports? You also have copies of bills for payment. Any questions on any of the bills? Need a motion to approve. Okay, Sharon, do I have a second? There's, go from the right, Carl.
Yes.
There.
Yes.
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 Yes. All approved. Okay, please, Board Chief, what you got for us?
The only thing I was going to bring up for the meet this season was the particular track that I was able to involve girls on the run for Green this year. That was a new program to me, been around for several years. And uh there were ten girls signed up for it from the Tupperware Broadway area in Walter Kelsey Coman, Shannon Broadway. That was one of the other pictures and then Ryan, he was down by Broadway. It was one of those things that it looked like it wasn't going to happen if somebody didn't step on it. So we kind of put together a group of coaches that had never coached before. Uh, if you hear anything mentioned about it for your family, neighbors, friends, it's a, it's really a good thing for legal professionals to. It's things that which coaches talk about after class, like which we could teach adults on these things. Because they're, it's about big, good judgment and taking care of yourself as a person, things like that. So if we're able to be involved with that, hopefully we'll continue in the area. That was all the thing I really wanted to come back to.
For the newer council members, why don't you, we have to adopt uh the motor vehicle traffic order as much as.
So uh the code of Virginia is broken down into numerous chapters. The forty-six point two chapter has to do with laws about motor vehicles and traffic. So it has to do with registration, speeding, all those kind of things. And every year uh we need to vote on ordinance, which is five at one point one. Which to summarize, it says that the town of Timberville adopts all of those uh laws in their entirety. What that allows us to do is basically charge the uh motors with those where we're able to receive funding. Otherwise, when we charge with the state code, if I'm on, we find a fault, okay, we took Commonwealth instead of coming back to the town. So that's what the ordinance is about and we have to vote on.
Questions? From out there, we ask those every, every year, sunny and motion to approve. I'll make that way. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, Carl.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Karen.
Yes.
Madal.
Yes.
Yes.
And I can, is this all going to sign right here? Yeah, the ordinance is on top of the resolutions by with the signature base. Okay, see, while we're doing that, we're down, I guess, any questions for Chief? Okay, other words, AC.
I've got a, um, some short, uh, everybody saw the Spanish report. On my end, um, yeah, we talked about the horrible funding here, the Risking Plan Act funding for. Forever now, for a lot, waiting for guidance, the federal government, the state continue to roll out more and more documents, more and more documents, and they're always lengthy documents. Um, DMO had a uh webinar today. Um, then actually during the middle of another webinar that we were in. It's recorded, I started watching a little bit of it, and the webinar was specifically for what the money for, what our money to use for. So it's, I think, I have now, because I keep watching that, maybe, maybe to get a little bit clearer is that what the money will be used for. But uh, so that's why we haven't related up with our list yet, our projects, because we don't have the guidance yet to know exactly what, what the money is still on. Uh, we have some ideas of what we want to set the money. But uh, so we get that, the final guidance, um, we can't make decisions, solid decisions. Um, I did delay a paper from the fire department, and everybody spotted, uh, it was a funding request, knowing that the funding come down, COVID coming down. Um, it would have been submitted a request for down to consideration. And so we can put that in stack with any projects that we talk about and bring that up for the discussions.
And you have a, as far as the amount, I know originally it's, it's high as two point four, then it put like seventy-five percent tax, your budget would bring it down, it's low as one point seven, so.
And the final figure we have today for the first range of money is one point three nine five.
So the final amount will be determined when action.
Yes, we'll, we'll let you know with final amount. We have some VCA and VA members that need to be appointed, reappointed, firm spilled, positions filled, agencies filled. So if anybody has any names or suggestions for those positions, just let me know and hopefully we'll have something in the, so I mean, the council. So I'll get you because that's VCA, that's sort of, I may have to take reports to be referred that way. But I'll get you all a list of what the terms are, what they can see, all of them, all that you build or reappointed. And I'll, and I'll talk to the uh, council, once we do, I can talk with individuals that were in the positions, whose terms have expired. Or if you don't get talked to yet, we can talk about it and determine what, go on with uh different individuals. Then I said, then on a Zoom meeting today with the Chindoo Rail Trail Exploratory Partnership, that is a main meeting. They have to have, obviously, they have so many meetings a year. And uh, it was a really good turnout. It was all the local, I think all the localities represented and most of the other organizations that were, uh, that were involved in it. And so you have, uh, it's approved for eleven pounds down at three counties, going from Front Royal to Broadway. So it's about a fifty mile stretch that they're looking at, and it's, it's got some pretty good movement going behind it.
There's been a survey, survey on Facebook.
Right, and we're going to put that, we'll put that on our social media, um, so that general residents can have easier access to it. And uh, the uh, I think that's a survey that's being done by the state, uh, BI. And they said that that is the best, but they had seventy-five, seventy-six hundred responses already, said it's the best response rate that they've ever received from that platform there. Which is nice that, you know, people are that interested in the project. Uh, there was a um, story the other day and Senator Kane was in Broadway, um, looking at that end of where the trail would be. So there was definitely gain from a lot of politicians, um, who've been formed of it, and I think most of them have been talked to. And it seems like all of them, one board, everybody kind of lost what kind of boom this would be to the economy, the area. So it's really, it's really nice to see the support, it's good. And the final thing that I have, I think, um, tomorrow is the close date for getting our proposals in for the demolition of the building on the corner of Main Street and Church Street. So once we get all those in, it's been quite a bit of buzz about it, uh, from what we put out there. We put it on the town website and we also listed it on the Virginia, the government website for the state. And uh, it's all our requirements that way for Germany. And so I paid quite a few phone calls and emails asking for, you know, for more information on, so it's good to see that we did that kind of the science. I think that's all that I have from the public works.
So as soon as, as soon as we pay, pay, pay.
Right, so once, once we get all the um, close time is three o'clock tomorrow, so once we get them all in, uh, we get public works committee together and go over them and kind of maybe a determination of that. Bring back the council for, uh, we'll have to look at what the estimated pounds are for the con, we're just going to get the job done and make a decision really quick on that.
Public works committee is going to be very busy this year with the chairs added Monday and, and, and since it's, can be used for, for infrastructure improvements. So I personally, Chris, let's see what, what type of initiatives we can, or whatever. Um, and that leads right into business and industry, and business and industry, I think, is part of it. Good to go this time? Okay. So any activity, I saw the big, long list here. I'm not going to ask you to read it this time, but it's uh, check the back, I think it's three thirteen, two thousand twenty through June, two thousand twenty-one, is that, is that?
Yep.
And this seems the one that, you want that read at each meeting or you want that just information sent out, what we're trying to send out?
I'm personally with the packets. Is that, anyone else?
Okay.
Karen, I think that's, I think that's fine. Most of them are, are uh, simple things, like additions, debts, and things like that. Like some of the bigger ones?
Well, we're going to, yeah, we're going to, whenever we have any bigger projects.
Is any activity parks and recreation?
We have the memorial dedication on next Friday, June eighteen at six thirty PM over there in Lady Park, and that's for the veterans memorial plaza.
Right.
Six thirty.
And I, I, she, she's something today, all the different things they're going to add, this year they're going to add, but I can't, I don't know. She's worried about not having enough chairs, it's sent me back to, 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 and so we're going on insert. Buying all the people who contribute by car sales and that price construction company, and all the people who don't make it happen. Unfortunately, I'm going to be on vacation because Saturday is on the bill of ten, but um, uh, Cecilia's done a great job of arranging, uh, those ways, uh, programs that, for that day. Assuming, are you going to be speaking AC or?
She put me on there for, I think, more than just for about, about probably anything.
And then, um, Chris updated, what else on parks and recreation, so there's the, what's wrong with that? Okay, you see, we're down to finance report, adopting our budget at our public comment last meeting. This is the night where we uh, got a chance to think about what was going on and we approve it this, this council meeting. So if you mind just through summary of our, see, the adopted budget.
Sure, the, the budget that is presented last, at last month's meeting with the public hearing, uh, federal budget is shown at two million, five hundred thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-six cents. Of that amount, uh, there are some capital projects that are included, uh, renovation of the police department building, upgrading the in-car cameras and the body cameras, upgrading the tasers. Relaxing whole software for uh keeping the laws up to date. Funding for the lighted property that we talked about earlier. Sandwalks and crosswalk for the McCauley Brown project, sidewalk project, paving of West Virginia, Virginia Avenue West. And a brush cutter attachment for the mini excavator for the maintenance department. So we just, we had one comment at the last meeting, um, we finally got the comment through. It's been easier to, in person, but, but it got, it got passed on to the council. I know Carl brought up about um the connection fees and thank Quinn for doing the research on that. We do have to have a public hearing for, um, so if that's something, and that's something council can discuss, um, I would recommend, unless there's something about the budget that's presented. Um, to go get a picture of that, and probably move into the connection fees after that's approved. Um, because obviously we have, we have a budget adopted before, it's a lot worse. And it is, and it is presented as a balanced budget, which is a problem.
And I think as far as increases, we had a dollar fifty a month increases in the trash rate, I mean, that's just a pass rate from what we'd be charged. We present increase in water sewer, which worked out to the base rate of like ninety-eight cents a month, I think this, I don't know if that's right.
Yes, of course.
Nine cents a month. So any questions in the budget? As we got it last time, and AC just did it again. And a motion to approve.
I make motion to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two budget as presented.
Thank you, Carl, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, you can have it. Any further discussion? Carl?
Yes.
And us?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, but it's great. Okay, we'll keep on, oh, now I want to talk about the.
Yeah, council wants to talk about that now.
I know, I know, last, last meeting, we had a little bit of discussion about uh, it's time to raise the water sewer connection. I know we discussed last meeting about also raising four thousand, forty-five hundred, it's Carl's suggestion. Um, and um, of course, we voted on, but we couldn't, couldn't.
So the, the discussion last time was you had a proposed budget and the motion was if you wanted to increase the fees or not. The fees didn't actually, you know, affect the budget, you only had to have a, a public hearing where we're changing the budget to one percent or more. So it's really related to fees, and because we didn't have publication in the public hearing related to the increase of the fees, we have to have a public hearing on the fee increase, so that you can get comment. So my interpretation is the council voted with its intention to try and increase those fees. So now it's up to me and AC to do the legal work to make sure we do it the right way, right? Which is to have the public hearing and to put out a public notice. So once we look through it, because of the timeline, when the May meeting felt prepared for June meeting, well, we couldn't do it tonight and, and need the notice provisions. So we'll have to do that at the next meeting in July. And uh, and then if, we'll need another vote after that public hearing to confirm that that's still the intention of the council.
It's basically saying that we do a budget.
Yeah, because you're, because you're affecting the utility fee, you have to have a public hearing and a vote, right? And you, we had the vote, we just didn't do a public hearing.
I'm catching that, want to do it right.
Yeah.
Um, so what was proposed at that point was a, was increasing to four thousand, forty-five hundred per inch, or a per inch, for in-town, and then.
Forty-five hundred five.
Five thousand, increase from all five hundred. It's council field. Want to continue to try to do that, or we?
Well, I'm getting called AC, um, because I was wondering, could that be grandfathered in the old rights for the two developers? We cannot do that.
I don't think you can do that, I don't think you can.
Because, you know, they already imploded the cost.
Right, so what we can do is, before, were those one of the reasons why I asked the question about whether we're going to make it effective? Right, so if the effective date is that, is in sometime in the middle of the year, like say October or December, then that gives the developer lead time, so that they can have those connection fees in place before the fee is increased. Or I think what you've done before is allow developers to prepay those obligations.
Yes.
And so they pay it before the change occurs.
That's what I would prefer to do the process, that's why.
To let it until like January one or six months in the year.
And give them the chance, if they want to prepay.
And we can, we can still have a publication, we can still have a public hearing in July, it's just the amount.
Second, just so effective date of January, March. It seems to be um, more fair to people who express interest in development in Timberville. And after they say they're building, you say, I want to touch five hundred dollars more, so it does give a better chance to those folks to.
Give it.
Yeah. I don't know how to say it.
I mean, well, building prices have risen astronomically, you know, maybe they won't even be building, we don't know. But that's for what, it will be seven houses?
It's forty-one and thirty couple of the others.
Seven, so on. I would prefer to give them a chance to prepay.
Sure, okay with the forty-five hundred that they discussed? Is there anyone else there? Uh, Sharon made a motion, let's see what happens and see if we, if we pass this.
So make a motion to delay or make a motion?
Does you have the amount and, and when, when they?
Okay, I make a motion that we increase it by five hundred dollars, but.
Effective January one.
January one, and that, that we give them six months.
I don't interrupt you, I just want to make sure that we do it the right way. So for the public notice, right, have you, has that already been sent out?
Yes, we know.
No. So we need to, I think for your public notice, you need to know that it's going to be an increase. And then, because we're not going to have the effective date, which we said before, it's going to be July first. If you want to say a date specific, then you can put that in the notice if you want to. Now, you would have the ability to change that after your public hearing, right? Either vote it down or make an amendment because you have a public hearing.
Right.
Um, I think the way people know in the notice, when it will be effective will be important. So potential developers and current developers, come and be heard.
So the motion she's having to have a public hearing?
No, 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 the, technically, you, you've already kind of told us what you want us to do.
Yeah.
It's more about what we want to have in the notice.
Okay.
Do we need to have, do we need to have an effective date before we go into the public hearing? Or do we just need to have, you know, say that we're going to raise that and that's something that can be hashed out?
I think it can be hashed out during the, the discussion phase, at the, at the meeting where you have the public hearing. My feeling is always better, if there's a consensus, it's better to share more information than less, so that people know when the effective date is going to be. Especially because we said before and it's in the minutes, you know, that it's going to be July first. If council now, for July first, makes it clear that that's not the intention, we're not going to hit that deadline, it's going to be sometime down the road, I think that's, the more transparent, the better.
Okay, I make a motion that we increase in-town and out-of-town connection fees by five hundred dollars, affecting January one. Two thousand twenty-eight.
Yeah, two thousand twenty-eight, you're, you're really good at that. Um, do I have a second?
Five hundred dollars each.
I'll second that.
Okay. Clear. Motion, a second, and further discussion?
How, how was, um, how does this affect the motion that I had, or the, this did that was passed?
The other motion, I guess, doesn't.
Well, see, the, the way that me and AC talk about, the way I interpret this, it's a vote for the intention of council, right? It's up to us to make it legally effective. So right now, you're expressing your intention for us, so that we get the notice out the right way, so that you can actually make that decision after we have a public hearing. So the last motion was a manifestation of the intention of the council, which is, tells us to act and do something. And we want to vote to make sure that everybody's on the same page, that we're doing it for a good reason, right? If it gets voted down now, that's no reason for us to go through the cost and the absolute public hearing and the publication.
So the motion, say, any further discussion?
If, if, um, I think we should talk with the two developers, because right now we're kind of operating not in good faith, if we're not talking to them. And give their opinions and how this increase would affect them. So, you know, maybe the, the January first date's still not a good date for them, of how the development plays out, because that's several rolls, that's several rolls away.
Well, they'll be coming to the, coming in. They'll be coming here and they can express their opinion, man, they'll be coming.
Well, I think they should be invited.
Well, they will be.
Well, we can make sure it's invited. And we can make sure you do that, so they can express their, their agreement or disagreement, whatever, that's, that's the point.
Okay, the motion, second, and we'll go around, Carl.
Yes.
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 No.
So it's, the passes, you know, for right now, but then we're going to have a public hearing, then we'll have a final vote once we've, we're, that's correct.
Yeah, just telling us to move forward with planning a public hearing, you know, there's no, this, this vote is not binding, other than to authorize.
Just go ahead and do it.
Do the publication and have a public hearing.
The budget ones, the need always. Yeah, the budget one is tied up in this, even if this is approved, we won't have to have another public hearing of the budget because it's less than one percent, we won't amend the budget. Awesome, um, personnel, AC, do I have any for us?
Staff and all of us have been doing amazing jobs, um, open for an office backup, um, with precautions. And uh, if they come in, it works, the new foyer area has been working out really well. And um, main sprung, obviously, the list, they've been on top of everything. And you saw Chris has noted there that June is vacation month, so, um, you know, he's had a, we only have four people anyway, and then, then we have a part, a part number two. So it's almost like a scholarship crew normally, so he might look like, you know, one blinker and disappointing, they're resident patients and.
Awesome. And uh, excited about seeing all the, well, how we're working together with Broadway, the police department. It's, it's just a really, it's a brilliant tight knit group now, so you know, Doug, you're doing a great job, appreciate that, Carl. Chief Doug, I say that, I've been doing a great job. Plains District War Museum, Chairman of the South Force.
Yes, I have, uh, total volunteer hours was two hundred and three, number of visitor, visitors was eighty-three, and our membership was one hundred and sixteen. This coming Sunday afternoon at one o'clock, I hope everyone can come, we're having a veterans panel. It's going to be three speakers on Vietnam, one chaplain from World War Two, Jamaica, read the moderator. And it was, um, what it was like to leave the valley and go to war. Our town historian, that Barbara, will be one of our speakers on her, at our, in town. And Timmy Brock VFW will be presenting the others. We have done this before, had really a good turnout, so hopefully it really comes.
Awesome, awesome, thank you. And do you have anything for us in that?
No, no, no.
Use this and then that.
I'm good.
Okay.
Oh, wait, let me second one more thing, it was, um, in May, you know, because we couldn't have our dinner and dance this year, which is our big fundraiser. So it was a group that had bought the, at the auction years ago. And they had called us and asked if we would still serve dinner to them, twelve people. And they guaranteed us three hundred dollars if we did it. They were so impressed, we made six hundred and fifty dollars for the museum.
There you go.
That's all that happened.
Okay, um, other visits? Council, anything else? Just, I don't know, I say I have summer and everyone's on vacation, but Carl pretty quickly wants to fund certain positive, for repair to that public works needs to be gathered. So then some of the items that AC, um, I don't know how it maybe ties to you too, and ties into Chris, or the priorities we have for, you know, if he's done all these funds, so.
Well, maybe like things move as possible, so.
July one.
Yeah, correct, okay. Hopefully, I'm, I'm on vacation, so I'll have to explore that. Um, we'll get together and the public works committees will be very busy, but again, on all these committees, even though we call public call, public works committee, the entire council's invited. We'll get together and the public works committees will be very busy, but again, on all these committees, even though we call public, call public works committee, the entire council's invited. And some of this, we probably shouldn't have the entire council there just to, to work out what we're gonna, what to write against, spend the funds on. Hopefully, as far as, uh, public works and water sewer, it's just ten, fifteen years in the future, hopefully. That's, that's the plan, or the vision, I guess. Um, so no other business? Okay, public comment, Ben, you have anything for us? Want to make any comment today? No? We're about there.
I'm good.
You gonna make some comment? Ben?